Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Neshamani School Board's Public Board Meeting of Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order with roll call. Ms. Burns, please.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbach?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mr. Linden is absent with prior notice. Mr. Cirullo?
Here.
Mr. Sporni?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Burns.
Notice.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board met in executive session this evening, prior to this meeting, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Thank you. Mrs. Burns, do we have any announcements?
There were no announcements.
Brings us to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. McGee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. In Board Docs, the Board and the public will find August's enrollment report. Enrollment not only is stable, but growing. The reports actually dated the beginning of August, where we had 540 kindergarteners. As of today, we have 640. So y'all can stop sending your kindergarteners now, alright? We have plenty. It's almost showtime. Next Monday, the teachers come back. Next Wednesday, we bring in the freshman class at Neshamani High School, the 5th grade class at the middle schools, and the kindergarten class, which is the class of 2035. Some quick math has them retiring somewhere 2085. Imagine the world we're trying to prepare them for in their short stay here in the Shaminie of 13 years. And then the day after, Thursday, September 1st, we are all in K-12, and our ships will be out to sea. Staffing, we're in good shape. We could use a little help. I need a French teacher. I need a math teacher. So if you know anybody, come see us. Could use a groundskeeper or two as well. So please, if you want to come join us, stop by our HR department. Tonight on the agenda, the Board will find the Health and Safety Plan, the COVID Health and Safety Plan. Basically, that is a requirement to receive a federal stimulus fund, and not a bad idea to have it in place. It's basically taking us back to pre-pandemic conditions, where we will run business as usual unless something happens, where we'll add mitigation. The goal to keep all students in school every day. Basically, the idea is if you're sick, stay home, and if you stay sick, call your doctor and follow their advice. So hopefully, that will be sufficient to get through the 2022-2023 school year. I'm going to yield the rest of my Superintendent's Report. If you recall, last September, a young 5th grader stood at the podium and challenged us to do something in September for Childhood Awareness Month. Mr. Allen, at the end of the meeting, a Vice President at the time, made a motion proclaiming September Childhood Awareness Month, and then I'm sorry, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, thank you. And then Mr. Parentano directed me to take the young lady out to lunch. A 5th grader. Sarah invited some of her friends. And being the person I am, I decided I needed chaperones, so Sarah's mother came, because I don't speak 5th grade girl. So last year, in the short time, I don't know if you're familiar, but what Sarah has been able to do with her group is Penn State has THON, Childhood Cancer. And then at high schools, there's such thing as Mini-Thon. And the Shaminie High School has a Mini-Thon, raises tens of thousands of dollars. Last year alone, in a short order, through Sarah's effort, working with Ms. Montone at the high school and our Mini-Thon group, we had Mini-Mini-Thon at the middle and elementary school level. So Sarah has some ideas for last year. She demanded an appointment with me, sat in my office. We went over some things. So I'm going to yield the rest of my time to Ms. Sarah Harvey, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Sarah?
Can you see a red light?
No.
Push the button. I think ours are off as well.
It's our whole round. Oh, there it is.
Sometimes.
Now they're out again.
That's probably the best idea I've had in multiple years. Have a seat. Talk right into that.
Thank you, Dr. McGee, and thank you to the entire Board and our Shaminie community here tonight, and those who are watching at home. For those who don't know me, I am Sarah Harvey, and I'm going into 6th grade epiphanies. Next month, I will mark eight years cancer-free after losing my left eye to retinoblastoma right before my 4th birthday. It happened so quick. I was diagnosed on a Monday, and my eye, along with the cancer, was removed that Thursday. It is something that I live with every day and will live with for the rest of my life. It will never go away, but I feel I am lucky to be standing here to fight for the kids. Almost 2,000 children die each year from cancer due to the lack of funding for research. Childhood cancer research only receives 4% of government funding for cancers. Yes, only 4%. In the last 30 years plus, there have only been three new cancer drugs developed and approved by the FDA to fight childhood cancer. This time is now for our kids to be given medicines for kids, not adult medicines that end up poisoning our children and cause very long-lasting effects, even developing other cancers as they get older. Last year, I came to the Board and Dr. McGee to ask why our district celebrated Breast Cancer Awareness Month each year, district-wide, but not Childhood Cancer Awareness. Well, as Dr. McGee says, I yelled at him to get his attention, and well, it worked. Last year, Mr. Allen made a motion to declare September Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the Shaminie School District going forward. After that, Dr. McGee kept his word and took me and some of my friends to Starbucks for lunch, so we can discuss different ideas. I am here today with my family and friends to discuss the progress we have made and what we have planned this year. I proposed to Dr. McGee that we do a week-long Spirit Week to raise awareness. Dr. McGee, one in my name, associated with it somewhere, so we decided on Sarah's Fight for the Kids, Neshamani Goes Gold. The week of September 12th through the 16th, the district-wide will celebrate Spirit Week. Each day will be designed as follows. Monday, PJ Day. Because who wouldn't want to start the week with PJs? Tuesday, Famous Person Day, just as any famous person. I suggest they were alive in the 1900s, but any famous person will do. Wednesday, Throwback 80s/90s Day. Time to hit your parents' classic and break out some vintage wear. Thursday, Favorite Character/Superhero Day. Dress like your favorite character or superhero. Our kids fighting this battle every day are superheroes. Friday, Go Gold Day. Wear your yellow or gold clothes, ribbons, whatever you have. Just wear gold. This will be sent to our district-wide, so all our students, staff, teachers, and yes, even transportation can take part in what will be the first Spirit Week for Childhood Cancer Awareness. I don't want to leave our Neshamani Mini-Thon out of this. They have done an amazing job for the past few years with raising money for diamonds. We reached out to them, and the committee has submitted their application already to try and get the link set up in time to coincide with our Spirit Week. If all goes well, we will have that district information out to our schools, transportation, and district offices. If not, it's okay. Our community will have plenty of time to make a donation when the link becomes available. Dr. McGee, School Board, members of our community, my family and my friends, thank you again for your support and help with bringing Childhood Cancer Awareness to our district, so we can fight for the kids. I can't wait to see our Neshamani community come together for an entire week next month, dedicated to helping kids who fight this horrible devil every day. Thank you. Can I go to Sarah?
Welcome. Thank you, Sarah. Well done. It's nice to be led. Mr. Allen, that's my report.
Thank you, and thank you, Sarah. Wonderful job. That brings us to our first period of public comment. Ms. Burns, do we have any signups?
There were no signups.
The podium is open. Anyone wish to approach and address the Board or the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to Agenda Item 2, Routine Matters. I'd like to make a master motion for Agenda Item 2.01, Hour Minutes; 2.02, The Treasurer's Report; 2.03, The Check Register and Procurement Card Purchases; 2.04, Our Investments; 2.05, Exonerations. There is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 8-0. That's correct, right?
Yes.
Tonight? That brings us to, I'll get back to my page here. Agenda, Section 3, Personnel Administrative. 3.01, Appointments. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments of administrative staff, and that is Mr. Neil French to Assistant Principal. At what school is that? Sorry.
Maple Point.
And that was Maple Point, I thought so. Is a motion on the floor? Does it have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Sporni. Any comments or discussions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Agenda Item passes 8-0. Motion passes 8-0. Sorry. Welcome.
Mr. Allen, I believe Mr. French, and I think I see both of his daughters in the back of the room. I'm not sure. I can't see them all. Yes, so congratulations, Mr. French.
Would you like to approach the podium?
Sure. Why not?
Right.
No, but speak loudly. You got it. Coach's voice.
Coach's voice. Obviously, thank you. It's extra special. This is going to be my 25th year, straight at Maple Point in some capacity. So I think when you hit markers like that, or markers in your career like this, the first emotion that's triggered is gratitude. So I was fortunate to be mentored by some legends in this profession, and Ray Kelly, Bill Simahowski, Brodus Davis. Dawn Kelly was one of my mentors and continues to be. So thank you to everyone who kind of helped guide me along in this portion of my career. Obviously, it's very humbling to work side by side with the people that have become your family over 25 years. And I think Maple Point is in a great spot. We have, obviously, if you know our staff, a rock-solid veteran corps. And we also have this kind of new, younger group that's coming in behind them that's very enthusiastic, energetic, and beginning to take on more and more leadership roles. So I think we're in a really exciting spot. Obviously, I'm very excited about the year. Obviously, mentioned my daughter. It'll be her last year, so makes it extra special to finish her time off. We're a Maple Point family. So thank you very much, and look forward to a great year.
Thank you. That brings us to 3.02, Retirement Resignations or End of Assignments. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations of administrative staff. There is one name on that motion. There's a motion on table. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any discussion on that motion? None? Bring it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 8-0. This brings us to Agenda 4, Personnel Certificated. Mr. Sullivan, please.
I'd like to make a master motion to approve Item 4.01. Which one? First one. First one, okay. 4.01 Appointments. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for certified staff, and there's six names on the list.
There is a motion on the floor. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 8-0. To Mr. Sullivan.
Now I'd like to make a master motion to approve Item 4.02, Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments; 4.03, Tenure Rewards; 4.04, Leaves of Absence; 4.05, Co-curricular Resignations; 4.06, Co-curricular Appointments; 4.07, Sixth Section Appointments; 4.08, Department Chair and Lead Appointments, and that's it.
Catch up to you here. Eight. There is a motion on the floor. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion on any of those motions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 8-0. Brings us to Agenda 5. That was all our fours, yes?
Yes.
That's Personnel Support. Mrs. Hollenbach, please.
I'd like to make a master motion for 5.01 Appointments; 5.02, Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments; 5.03, Leaves of Absence Revisions, and that's it.
Motion on the floor. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirullo. Any of those items require discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 8-0. That brings us to Agenda Item 6, Business Operations. Back to Mrs. Hollenbach, please. Oh, I apologize. Mr. Sporni, would you read our first under 6?
I'd like to make a motion, 6.01, M&amp;W Precast LLC High School Baseball and Softball Dugouts. Whereas the Neshamani Board of School Directors desires to install dugouts at high school baseball and softball fields, now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby adopts the proposal from M&amp;W Precast LLC as submitted subject to final contract review by the district solicitor with one attachment.
There is a motion on the floor. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Oh, I'm.
Apologies.
Just to be clear, the dugouts that we are approving are the ones that we had the pictures of at the last facilities meeting, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, all those in favor of Motion 6.01? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 8-0. Brings us to 6.02. Mr. Cirullo, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 6.02, Confidential Secretaries Act 93 Agreement, July 2019 through June 2026. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors approves the revised Act 93 Agreement for the Confidential Secretary's effective September 1st, 2022.
There is a motion on the floor. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any discussion? Bring to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 8-0. Mr. Cirullo, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 6.03, NCAA Act 93 Agreement, July 2020 through June 2025. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors approves the revised Act 93 Agreement for Cabinet Administrators, the NCAA, effective September 1st, 2022.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there? Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any discussions? Comments?
I would just like to say, these last two motions, 6.02 and 6.03, we wanted to thank our employees that have worked tirelessly for us, and we're trying to hopefully get everybody here and stay here on a long-term basis. We appreciate all of your efforts and dedication.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbach. Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes 8-0. Brings us back to 6.04. Mrs. Hollenbach?
6.04, Board Meeting Schedule, 2022 through 2023 School Year. Whereas the Neshamani Board of School Directors adopted and published a schedule of public meetings for 2022 calendar year at the December 5th, 2021 Reorganization Board Meeting, and whereas the Neshamani Board of School Directors adopts and publishes a schedule of public meetings for the 2022 through 2023 school year, now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby adopts the attached board meeting schedule for the 2022 through 2023 school year, and the file is attached.
There's a motion on the floor. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Does that, does that motion require or have any comments or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes 8-0.
If I could just add to that, anybody that's looking for the schedules, you can find it on our website for anybody out in the public. All the board meeting and the school schedules, all on our website.
Brings us to Agenda Item 7, Educational Development, and it brings us to Ms. Bowman, please.
I'd like to make a motion, 7.01, Emergency Declaration of COVID-19 Pandemic. Whereas the World Health Organization declared the current outbreak of COVID-19 a global pandemic on March 11th, 2020, and whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Ed has determined that COVID-19 pandemic constitutes an emergency within the means of Section 520.1 of the Public School Code, and whereas the Board of School Directors has determined that the risks of COVID-19 present to our students, faculty, and community require an extraordinary response. Now therefore, the Board finds and declares that COVID-19 pandemic is an emergency with the meaning of Section 520.1 of the Pennsylvania School Code, and be it further directed as follows. Section 1, For the duration of said pandemic, but in no event of any period exceeding four years, the superintendent shall have the duty and the authority to develop a health and safety plan, subject to board approval, in a form and manner prescribed by the Pennsylvania Department of Education that ensures a minimum of 180 days of instruction, allowing for a minimum of 900 hours of instruction at the elementary level, and 990 hours of instruction at the secondary level, employing any combination of in-person, virtual, and distance learning as the superintendent deems appropriate to address the health and safety of students, faculty, and community, and the learning needs of students. Such instructions shall comply in full with the requirements of Chapter 4 of the Regulations of the State Board of Education, and with the curriculum standards published in the accordance therewithin. And be it further directed, Section 2, the superintendent is declared is directed to submit to the Pennsylvania Department of Education the emergency instructional time template, as well as any other submissions required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And this, the Shaminie School District COVID-19 Resolution for Emergency Declaration is attached.
There is a motion on the floor. Does it have a second? Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any discussions or comment? Bring to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That item passes 8-0. That brings us to 7.02. Mrs. Lafferty, please.
I'd like to make a motion for 7.02, 2022/2023 COVID-19 Health and Safety Plan. Whereas the Neshamani School District is required by the U.S. Department of Education to approve a health and safety plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the Neshamani School District Health and Safety Plan as presented, subject to any changes necessary due to conditions and additional guidance from the applicable government agencies. One file attachment.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Does it have a second?
Second.
A second by Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 8-0. Alicia?
I'd like to make a motion, 7.03, Pre-K Counts Partnership Agreement. Whereas the Neshamani School District is a Pennsylvania pre-k counts grantee and is the lead agency in this partnership agreement. And whereas the Bucs IU provides early childhood programming to 3- and 4-year-old children, and whereas the Neshamani School District and the Bucs IU desire to continue to work together to meet the needs of the families in their service area, to allow more children to receive high-quality pre-k services, improve the quality and coordination of the early childhood programming within communities for 3- and 4-year-old children, provide more inclusive settings for children with special needs, and help create a seamless transition from preschool to kindergarten. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached Pennsylvania pre-k counts partnership agreement for August 24th, 2022, through June 30th, 2023. One attachment.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Call for discussion or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 8-0. 7.04. Mrs. Bowman?
I'd like to make a motion, 7.04, Title I, School-Wide Improvement Plan Approval. Whereas the Neshamani Schools have been identified as Title I Schools, Albert Schweitzer Elementary, Herbert Hoover Elementary, Joseph Fertabar Elementary, Towanka Elementary, and Walter Miller Elementary, whereas school has developed, each school has developed a school improvement plan based upon a thorough review of the essential practices to advance educational programs and processes and improve student achievement. And whereas the action plans that we will be implementing address our specific school needs, include strategies that provide educational opportunities and instructional strategies for all students and each of the student groups, increases the amount and quality of learning time, and provides equity in the curriculum, which may include programs, activities, and courses necessary to provide a well-rounded education. These plans address the needs of all children in the school, but particularly the needs of those at risk. of those at risk of not meeting the challenging state academic standards. And whereas the school-level plans have been duly reviewed by the building administrator, superintendent of schools and will be formally approved by the district's Board of Education per guidelines required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And whereas the school-level plans addresses all the required components prescribed by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, meet ESSA requirements, reflects evidence-based strategies that meet the three highest levels of evidence outlined in ESSA, has a high probability of improving student achievement, has sufficient LEA leadership and support to ensure successful implementation. Now therefore be it resolved, we request the Pennsylvania Department of Education grant formal approval to implement each school-level plan.
There is a motion on the floor? Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any discussion? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight zero. That brings us to agenda item 7.05. Mr. Kovitz, please.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve 705, out-of-district placements. Whereas, in order to meet the educational programming needs of specific students, it may be advantageous to utilize the service of out-of-district providers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the out-of-district placements identified below. And there are two attachments.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor? Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any discussions or comments? Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight zero. Mr. Kovitz.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve 7.06, overnight trips. Whereas, according to Board Policy 618, trips extending overnight are permitted by authorization of the Board of School Directors only. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following overnight trips, and there are three of them.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor? Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Open to discussion or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight zero. Brings us down to the agenda eight, yeah, sorry, section eight, closing of the meeting. Is there any other board business? Anyone have to... Seeing none? That brings us to our next round of public comment. The podium is open. Anyone wish to approach the podium and address the board or the community? Sure? Going once? Twice? Okay, closed public comment. And that brings us to board comment. Anyone wish?
Actually, I just want to congratulate Mr. French. Congratulations on, uh, your appointment. And also, as Coach French, please go out and let's beat Ocean City at the Battle of the Beaches Friday. Looking forward to it. Wonderful.
Sure.
I also, I just wanted to congratulate Mr. French. Well-deserved. Congratulations. And I wanted to, um, thank Sarah for addressing the board and the public and informing us of all your activities. I am blown away by your public speaking and I would encourage you to, that's something you need to pursue in the future. I'm a teacher of fifth grade and I really admire your public speaking skills. And did you write that all yourself? Okay, mom helped. Mom helped. Mom didn't write it. So, well done. And thank you for taking on that commitment and fighting pediatric cancer research. And I just want to welcome everybody back. I hope it's an easy transition from summer to school and, uh, I look forward to the upcoming school year. So, welcome back.
So, uh, I'm gonna just piggyback on, uh, congratulate, uh, Mr. French once again. Sure? And, uh, and Sarah, you have my, uh, you have my utmost, uh, admiration. I, I too am a cancer, a childhood cancer survivor. So, uh, um, it's, I just recently, uh, celebrated my 43rd year of being in remission. So, thank you. So, uh, there's a, there's a, I have a soft spot there for you and for all the good work you're trying to do. I wish I had your courage and drive, uh, when I was your age to do what you're doing now. So, again, I guess I'm a little envious as well. So, may you, uh, may you, uh, have, uh, 43 years, if not many, many more of being, uh, in remission from your blastomas. So, uh, again, well done and keep up the good work. And, uh, and, and, and feel free to hit me up. This is, this is a commitment for a donation for, uh, for your mini mini-a-thon, I think. So, I'm also a Penn State graduate too, so I, I, I love the thon thing. So, uh, keep, keep doing what you're doing.
Anyone else?
Sarah, you looked very good at Doc's seat. Maybe one day you'll sit up there. All the time. What's that? Yes, it's an absolute wonderful goal. Um, again, I wanted to welcome everybody to the start of school. I don't know that the kids are looking too forward to it, but the district is ready to welcome you back with open arms, the teachers, administration, support staff. We look forward to having you in our buildings and for a great year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to welcome everyone back. Hope everyone had a fun and productive and relaxing summer. Prepare you for the school year ahead, our students here in the audience, uh, and teachers and administrators and board members. I know that it was quite busy, uh, keeping up on social media, all the things that were going on in the district. I don't know that I got a chance to address the, uh, summer stock program, but that was a fantastic show, um, that my sister and I came and enjoyed. I think I did. I think I mentioned my sister likes musicals and she said we had to keep an eye out for a number of, of those. She hopes to see them in Bristol or elsewhere, Riverside Theater, I think. And Sarah, your poise at Doc's seat was fantastic. And how quickly you jumped into that seat. It's, yeah. So glad that we were able to do something for you and I, I am so glad that you took it and ran with it. Very impressed. Thank you much. That brings me to just a couple comments I wanted to make on behalf of the tech school since we had our first meeting last night. I just want to point out that August 29th, uh, is their in-service day, for all staff reporting. And then August 30th will, is the freshman orientation in-service day. And on August 31st, that will be the first day of school for all students. I can report that the upgrades and the construction that's been going on in the tech school are on target and on budget and moving along. I think we were a little surprised we were able to get back into the boardroom last night because, uh, that, that whole original wing had been under, under construction, new rooftop units and, uh, new cabling going through the, so I just wanted to report on that. Everything is on track for that. And that is all I have. That brings us to our future meetings. Sorry, I lost my place. Ah, here we go. Which will be, uh, August, nope, that's today, August 23rd, right? September 12th, we have business operations?
Yes.
And then on the 13th of September will be our next public work session meeting. And on the 14th, we have a facility and planning committee coming up. And I believe, Mrs. Bowman, you have a date in there? September 20th for your education. That's it. Have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hollenbach. All those in favor? Thank you and good night, everyone.